Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the February 9th session of the Bellingham City Council. We have one announcement. On Monday, February 23rd at 7:00 PM, there will be a public hearing regarding an incentive program for innovative, affordable, low-income homeownership projects. Tonight, we have the honor of having Boy Scouts Troop 7 here, and they will lead us in the flag salute. Please join us.
(Inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Troop 7. Roll call.
Terry Barnaman.
Here.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Gene Knutson.
Here.
Michael O'Quist.
Here.
I assume Roxanne might be trying to find a parking space?
Could be. She ought to talk to the council about parking around here, but that's okay. Okay.
Pinky Vargas and Jack Weiss.
Here.
I'm going to count Roxanne here.
Yeah, she's here.
There she is.
Okay, we're going to deviate a little bit tonight. We're going to go right into our presentation of employee recognition awards, and I'll turn it over to Mayor Linville.
Well, I have a very minor role in this tonight because it's an opportunity for our department heads to acknowledge the employees that have served our city so well for such a long time. As you remember, the employees will come by and shake your hand, and we are thrilled that so many showed up today to get our -- receive our thanks and our appreciation. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to Casey.
So, good evening. We're going to get started right away. So, Fire Chief Bill Newbold, wherever you went, if you could please join me up here. We're going to begin with the Bellingham Fire Department this evening.
Tonight's a special night, and it's a privilege to be able to be up here in front of council, Mayor Kelly, the community out here, and many of the employees in the city. And it's really a special time for us to be able to recognize the service that these employees have provided, not only to our respective departments, but to the city as a whole. And when we think about, I know in fire, we define ourselves a lot by culture, the service that we provide, and the pride that we take in delivering that service. And these folks that we're going to recognize tonight span anywhere between 20 and 40 years in the fire department, and help us define that culture and take the level of service to a level of excellence that we're proud to be able to provide to the community of Bellingham. I'd like to ask Assistant Chief Bill Hewitt to come up here and join me. What I'll do is I want to recognize individually each of our eight employees from fire who is going to be receiving a service award tonight. Call you up here. I'd like to say a few comments about that, and then we'll have you stand here, and then as a group, we'll have you go by and shake the council's hand. So first off, I'd like to recognize Danny Anderson for 40 years of service. Danny Anderson, in celebrating 40 years of service, he's a longstanding captain down at Station 2 in Fairhaven. And he's been at that station as long as I've been here, which has only been two years. No, but my understanding is Danny's been there for quite a bit of his career, and his face is very familiar in the community there in Fairhaven and throughout Bellingham. He spent 33 years as a captain of his 40 years, an amazing contribution, leading new young firefighters, leaving his mark on the fire service, not just here in Bellingham, but as those individuals grow and then also enter the fire service throughout their careers. Danny's been awarded an Outstanding Service Award in his tenure here and has done a lot to protect the citizens there in the Fairhaven and city of Bellingham. Thank you, Danny. Next, I'd like to call up Dave Tavite. Dave is one of our outstanding paramedics, and in his 35 years in the fire department, he has, in 2014, would have been 34 years as a paramedic. Shortly after joining, he spent one year as a firefighter, saw the bright light there and wanted to become a paramedic, and has done so and has continued to contribute outstandingly as a paramedic for the last 34 years. I think one of his claims to fame is delivering a baby in the back of Medic 1 on I-5 on the way to the hospital. And if I'm not mistaken, my sources tell me that was on 010101. So, not only a lucky baby for that date, but to have Dave Tavite. Dave, thank you for your years of service. Carrie Gustafson. Carrie, celebrating 30 years of service with Bellingham Fire Department. He's a battalion chief, excuse me, sir. Chief Gustafson, battalion chief out of Station 1. As a battalion chief, his role is overseeing all the staff that is on duty on any given day. We have six fire stations, three paramedic units, and Chief Gustafson is one of our four battalion chiefs overseeing our shift operations on four different shifts. His background, he was a paramedic in the fire department for 14 years, again, at very high level of service there in EMS. He was also one of the inaugural hazmat team members. That started back in 1996. He was a charter member, and then just after he got promoted to battalion chief, he stepped away from that to allow another young individual to come on and be a part of that team. Carrie, thank you for your years of service. Brian Kane. Brian's one of our driver operators, and actually, he spent just over half of his career in fire. When he was hired on, celebrating now 25 years, he spent 12 years in Public Works. Thank you, Ted, for allowing him to come over. And we scooped him up in the fire department. Brian recently has become one of our qualified aerial operators. You'll see parked out here, we have our large ladder truck, special operations with that, and Brian is one of our outstanding individuals qualified to operate that. Just a really solid guy as a driver operator, can-do attitude. Brian, thank you for your years of service. John Skirlock. John is one of our paramedics riding on Medic 1. He too, like Dave Tavite, after one year in the fire service, saw that bright light and said, "That's what I want to do." So out of his 25 years celebrated there in 2014, 24 of those have been on Medic 1. John, as far as, you know, talking with his colleagues, and how would you describe John? Just a very steady, very reliable, very positive person that you can always rely on as a partner, and one of those that you want to see at your door if you had to call 911 for a paramedic. Also, on his off time, I'd like to recognize John is also a very accomplished pilot and photographer. Maybe you've seen some of his work around. Thank you, John. And do we have Sheila Hanlon here? Sheila? There we go. Sheila's celebrating 20 years of service. I'll pause here to give her a hug. Very unique. Sheila works in our Prospect Fire Dispatch Center, doing fire and EMS dispatching, and she started in the city over at Wattcom. And thank you, Chief Cook, in the police department, for allowing us to steal another employee. She now works over in Prospect, which is our fire and EMS dispatching, has been there since 1999. One of the unique things about dispatching is often they don't get a chance to see face-to-face with that person that makes the call to 911. Very stressful situations, very stressful conditions in the work environment as far as relating with a high-anxiety caller, but when you think about the chain of survival, it's our dispatchers that really plug us in as firefighters and the responders out there on the street, so they do an incredible job. Sheila's responsibilities now is overseeing all of our dispatchers. She's our Communications Operations Officer, so thank you, Sheila, for your work. And Erica Martin. Erica too saw the light, that bright light. She is one of our paramedics, and also to take that work a step further, Erica is one of our four EMS captains. And similar to the roles and responsibilities of our battalion chief, the EMS captain oversees all the paramedics on duty in a particular day. It's a position that we acquired, I guess it was about 10 years ago, eight years ago, and really contributes a lot to the orchestration and supervision of our paramedics out there in the street. Erica has spent 15 years as a paramedic, nine years of that has been the EMS captain. Some of her responsibilities also include overseeing all of our equipment purchasing for EMS. Erica, thank you for your years of service. We do have one individual who could not be here tonight. That's Fire Captain Tim Kayes, celebrating 20 years of service. Tim, thank you very much. And I think now we'll have all of you go around and shake the council's hand, and Mayor Kelly. Thank you, eight firefighters, paramedics, captains, battalion chiefs.
All right. Next up, I'd like to welcome Melissa Bronson, the Employee Payroll and Benefits Manager with the Human Resources Department.
I'm honored to be able to present the 30-year service award to Mary Ann Vanderveen. This is a -- yay! This is a privilege usually reserved for department heads, and I asked if I could present this to Mary Ann. She's a very special employee. She started her career with the city, working in the police department and the records department for over five years. She worked in Public Works for three years, and we have been fortunate enough to have her as part of our HR team now for 22 years. One of the expectations of city employees is that they meet the core competencies of service, results, and teamwork and cooperation, and for me, this really speaks to the heart of who Mary Ann is. She takes pride in her work. She's very service-oriented. She's known for winning others over. She really cares about the employees that she serves. She's a great face for HR. One of the things that Mary Ann says, and I appreciate that she will just kind of tell it like it is, it gives us the opportunity to find efficiencies in our department, and a saying that Mary Ann has said that I have come to appreciate is, "Nothing is ever easy." And I think that's very true. We have very complex, you know, complex bargaining contracts, and people just probably think those paychecks magically get out the door on payday, and Mary Ann is one of our core employees for that, and she makes it look easy. And so, thank you, Mary Ann, for your 30 years of dedicated service to the city of Bellingham and public service.
All right. Next, I'd like to welcome Marty Mulholland, the ITSD Director.
Good evening. Come on down, Scott Elsner. So it is a great pleasure to honor Scott, and it's kind of fun to follow Mary Ann because Scott is our city's Applications Manager, and one of the many systems that he supports, applications meaning complex computer applications, is the city's payroll system. So Scott has been on the phone occasionally when someone's called and said, "There's something up with the payroll system." And he keeps a real cool head when dealing with very complicated systems issues. Scott started work for the city in April 1994, and he's held a number of roles, all within the IT department. He supported the financial systems, the utility billing systems, a variety of HR and benefit systems, and has done reports for almost every system the city owns. So, he's detail-oriented. He has extensive knowledge of the city, sometimes knows the business rules as well as the departments. He has an incredible work ethic, and I asked a few folks what they would say about him, and they said, "Keeping is cool in those challenging situations." He's well-liked, has a great sense of humor, and is just a great guy to have on our team. So thank you, Scott, for what you've done for the city.
All right. Next, I'd like to welcome Darlene Peterson, the Municipal Court Administrator.
Thank you, and thank you for being here to share this evening with us. Judge Deborah Lev is on her way down, and she's going to be presenting with me, and I'd like to ask our three employees, Kathy Kramer, Elena Dixon, and Becky Curtis, if you would please come down. We feel especially privileged to be here tonight because as the judicial branch, we don't get around as much as some of the rest of you. So I'd like to introduce Kathy Kramer, if you'd come up first, Kathy. Kathy is our Legal Process Supervisor. She's been with the department for over 20 years. Kathy schedules all of our hearings. She keeps our judges scheduled. She gets us pro tems when we need, and she oversees all of the legal processes at one in our office. Thank you, Kathy. Elena Dixon. Elena Dixon is a court process specialist, and she's what I'd call our senior clerk. When you need to know something that's going on in the court, you go to Elena. She's just a go-to person. She's as steady as a rock, and she's always willing to learn new things. She takes care of our juries and our cases, and we're just really glad to have her. So thank you, Elena. And last but not least, Becky Curtis. Becky and Elena were both hired within the city within three days of each other, so they're kind of twins here. Becky is our program technician, and if you're wondering what that is, eight months ago, so did I, because that's how long I've been with the court. Becky does so many things. She takes care of our records and our requests. She is there to help us in every way possible. She assists the judge and the commissioner and myself in administrative duties, and she is the most delightful person to speak to on the phone. If you ever have a problem, you should call Becky because she'll make you feel better. Thank you, Becky.
All right. Next, I would like to welcome James King, the Bellingham Parks and Recreation Director.
So it's my privilege to introduce Leslie Bryson. So Leslie, would you come down? So Leslie has been with our department for 20 years, and she is our Design and Development Manager, which means that she oversees the Greenways Program and all of the acquisitions and development and additions of facilities to parks and trails that are added through that. She also has built a lot of playgrounds and other wonderful facilities in our community. She's gotten many, many grants. Her and her staff have worked hard on that, gone through those processes of design and working with the public and permitting and that long process that it takes to develop our facilities. I think we're very lucky to have her. And as you guys know, we have one of the best park systems in the country in this community. And I think that it is very likely that there is no other individual who has had as much influence as Leslie at making that system a wonderful system. So thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
No, that's it.
All right. Next, I'd like to welcome Rick Suppler, our Planning and Community Development Director.
Can Brian Smart and Jackie Lynch come down? Well, I'll start with Jackie. Jackie has served 25 years with the city. She is professionally and personally dedicated to the art of planning. One of the most remarkable things I found out just in my short tenure here is how she has consistently improved and expanded her knowledge. She's pursued AICP and advanced certification. She's active in the American Planning Association, has presented a number of regional conferences. She is, as I understand it, the resident Fairhaven guru, which may be a hereditary title, I don't know. And she has been involved, most recently, in their parking study and plan, but was before that in the neighborhood plan itself. And we consider her in our office a resource in all things that are historic and cultural preservation. It's a pleasure to work with you, and we thank you for your service. Brian Smart celebrates 20 years of service to this community. Brian started in the Public Works Stormwater Department and moved into planning. He is always the first person in our department people and his colleagues go to for help. If an issue comes up, if a new application comes in they haven't seen, my understanding is you're the go-to guy for that, and you support our department through that. Moreover, you have always strived, from what your colleagues have said, to make Bellingham a better place to live, and that commitment shows through in the work you do. You are instrumental in getting St. Joseph's Institutional Master Plan completed. It's a very strong and complete body of work, and you are truly, you use your humor to help us through, I know it's hard for you to imagine, we do have occasionally stressful things happen in planning, and we count on Brian to help cut the tension and move forward. And we thank you for your service to this community for 20 years.
Next, I'd like to welcome Bellingham Chief of Police Cliff Cook.
I would like to call the individuals down first before I make any comments, and so when you hear your name, would you step forward, please? Lieutenant Rick Soucy with 40 years of service to the city. Sergeant David Richards with 35 years of service. We'll have to talk about him. Deputy Chief David Dahl with 30 years of service. Deputy Chief Flo Simon with 25 years of service. Greg Erickson, Deputy Director of Wattcom 911, 25 years of service. Evidence Technician Amy Garland with 20 years of service. Officer Craig Johnson with 20 years of service. Congratulations. Well, you're looking at 195 years of total public service to the city of Bellingham, and I know they don't look like they've been around that long, but believe me, this is an extraordinary group of people, and I have to start off with Lieutenant Rick Soucy with 40 years, and quite frankly, and I say it very respectfully, he is our elder statesman in the department. Whenever I need to know, "How did we get where we are from where we were?", I have to ask Rick. He can give me a lot of historical perspective and pretty much a view of how the department has grown over the years and how the culture has developed. He just asked me, he was told that with 40 years of service, you get a new Harley, but I'm not quite sure that that's a -- (Laughter) Sergeant Dave Richards, within the last two years, took over our evidence and property facilities, and let me tell you, it was a pretty daunting task. We had just undergone an accreditation review, and there were some issues found that had to be corrected, and he took the bull by the horns and made those corrections, and he's made several improvements to our evidence and property room, along with Amy helping him, because quite frankly, that is a daunting division. Thousands of pieces of property and evidence have to be accepted, catalogued, logged, placed into various property facilities, and then tracked when the need arises for court. Dave has also been very helpful in some of the projects we've done within our building. We're trying to reconstruct some of the historical artifacts for our department, which, quite frankly, are strewn across the city, various places, the museum for one, in the hands of private individuals, and we did that in the last year and a half, and if you come into our lobby, you'll see a small display of items from the department's history, and it's amazing how many people take the time to stop and look and then ask about them. I had a woman ask me today if there was anything from Bonnie and Clyde in the case, and I had to tell her, "No, unfortunately, I didn't have any of those items." So, the next two individuals, Deputy Chief Dave Dahl and Flo Simon, are what I consider to be my right-hand. are what I consider to be my right hands. I'm new to this department, two years, new to the city. Much like with Rick, I have to rely on David for historical perspective, administrative perspective. And he did start when he was 12. He was a cadet, believe it or not. Flo came to us a little later. She was attending school at Western, I believe, when she decided to come to the police department. And you know, I didn't realize this, but everywhere I go in this city, everybody knows Flo. I don't get asked about issues around the department or what the police department's doing currently. It's, "Hey, do you know Flo?". And, "Well, of course I do", you know, but it's amazing. She gets around this community at various functions and service groups and represents the department well. And she's been a pleasure to have, helping me run the department. Greg Erickson, this, within the last year, was appointed as our Deputy Director for WATCOM 911. We had done a national search, and frankly, when we were finished, we realized we had the person we needed right in-house. And he stepped into the role. 25 years of service in emergency 911 operations is a laudable thing. People, that's a very stressful, as Chief Newbold mentioned, a very stressful duty to carry out. It's much more stressful when you're trying to manage a division of that size and all the issues that come along and the new technologies. And quite frankly, we're going, getting ready to go through some new changes with a new CAD. And I'm just pleased to have him here. He's extremely knowledgeable and just a gentleman about everything he does. Amy is one of our civilian staff members, and as I mentioned earlier, critical to our evidence and property room. Quite frankly, the police department, much like the fire service or any other city department, cannot function without the support of personnel in the department. They're not seen every day, but they're the ones that help us make the department operate effectively and provide quality service to citizens who come to our facility to recover evidence that we may have recovered from a burglary or something of that nature. And I always see her in the hall periodically, about every other day. She's always smiling, even though she may have a load of stuff on a cart that looks, kind of dwarfs her, but she's just, just one of those people you're just happy to see. And she's been a great, great help to Dave in running that division. Last but not least is Officer Johnson, and I, I'm gonna kind of pick on him a little bit. The men and women before you represent a lot of years of service to this city. They also represent what has made the culture of this department what it is. And I think we all know the unique police department that this community so fortunately has. But I think that the critical component is the people in the field, the officers in patrol, who day in and day out, across 24 hours, seven days a week, provide a service to the community. And Officer Johnson's one of those individuals that not only translates the values of our department in the service they provide to the community, they are out there every day representing all of us. And I can't tell you how much of a pleasure it is to run an agency that only values public service, but truly understands what the word "service" means. It's my honor and my privilege to represent this department out in the community every day. But more importantly, it's my honor and privilege to represent these individuals because they are what make this department what it is. So thank you.
All right, to close out our presentations, I'd like to welcome Ted Carlson, our Public Works Director.
Okay, thank you very much. We have three Public Works employees to recognize today, or tonight. So let's start off with Bill Evans. Bill, come on down. So we are recognizing Bill for 35 years of service tonight. Bill is the Chief Water Treatment Plant Operator. He's responsible for the water treatment plant operations, and he's had a long distinguished career with the city of Bellingham. He's been recognized many times by various associations, including earlier last year, or late last year, being recognized as a, for a lifetime achievement award by the American Association of Waterworks, which was very prestigious. Our water treatment plant wins outstanding performance awards fairly regularly. And that's not something that comes easily. As you can imagine, treating the water for about 100,000 customers is something that takes a lot of work, a lot of expertise. You can't turn it off. You don't get to shut the plant down for a while and take a break. Every day, we need to provide the water to the customers, and we need to make sure that it meets all of the federal and state drinking water requirements. Bill does an outstanding job. It's a job that can be very stressful. As you may imagine, you just don't get an opportunity to take a break, really. You have to make sure that everything works every day, and Bill does an outstanding job of that. Next is Gary Gilflyn. Gary also has 35 years of service with the city of Bellingham. And Gary's a plant operator, and the city of Bellingham's a little bit unique. Most utilities have operators that either specialize in water or specialize in wastewater. But Bellingham requires a lot of our operators. We ask a lot of them. And they actually need to operate both the wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plant. And we've taken advantage of technology over the years, and there's several times, including throughout the evening and on weekends, where we have just one operator that's operating both the water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, and about 60 remote pumping and lifting stations. That's a lot of infrastructure to oversee. It's a lot to be responsible for. They do it through storms. They do it through heavy demand. They do it through equipment failures. And we ask a lot of our operators. Gary's been doing it for about 35 years, and he's done a great job. And finally, Mark Jimmy, come on down.
We're recognizing Mark for 30 years of service. Mark works in our fleet unit. He's a mechanic. The city of Bellingham has around 800 pieces of equipment. That's both rolling stock, equipment vehicles, heavy equipment, fire trucks, police cars, backhoes, loaders, as well as equipment, smaller equipment for the Parks Department and others. And, you know, the fleet division is one of those groups that's behind the scenes. We don't talk about them a lot, but all the other folks that you heard from tonight, they really can't do their job if they don't have functioning, reliable equipment. So when the police needs to respond, EMS needs to respond. The fleet mechanics are the ones that make sure that those pieces of equipment and vehicles are functioning, they're reliable, and they get the folks where they need to be. So Mark's been doing this for a long time. He does a very good job, and we appreciate his service.
Congratulations to Bill. That's right. Congratulations.
Just like to give one more round of applause for our dedicated, long-serving employees. I want to thank you all for joining us tonight to celebrate these employees, their hard work and their dedication to make this one of the best communities in the United States to live in. I think that we're gonna adjourn briefly for a reception down in the lobby, so please come and join us. Please come and meet our employees and say thank you.
Before we do that, though, on behalf of the council, let me just say thanks to every single one of you. We have, without a doubt, the greatest set of employees there is. We're very proud of you. We enjoy working with you. Thank you very much, and we'll adjourn for about 10 minutes. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. Thanks for your patience for those who signed up on the 15-minute public comment period. Yoshi Ravel.
Good evenings, members of the public and staff, members of city council, Madam Mayor. My name is Yoshi Ravel. First, I want to also say thank you to those who were honored tonight for their service. First of all, it is an amazing thing to show up day after day and do the job, and I also think it's an amazing thing that we take the time to honor those who do that. I'm here to speak about those who aren't quite so honored, and that is the homeless. A society, a civilization, is measured by how it treats the least, and we tend to shut the homeless off to the side, and it's a horrible thing. What we don't realize is that our fate is connected with theirs. We tend to think that we go home at night to our homes and we're somehow separated from their fate, but we're not. To the extent that we marginalize and ignore the homeless, we marginalize and ignore our own concerns. We're born with these things called empathy centers and altruism genes, and in order to shut off those things concerning the homeless, we have to shut those centers off and those genes off for ourselves. There is no treating one person one way and another person the other way. The way we treat the homeless is the way we treat ourselves. Their fate is intimately locked into ours. To the extent that we welcome them into the community and give them the resources that they need to recover, to be healthy, and to live socially productive lives, we will do the same thing, we will advance the same amount. To the extent that we marginalize them and ignore them, we are creating our own demise. We are intimately connected to the fate of the homeless. If we don't tend to their needs, we don't truly tend to our own. I thank you all for allowing me to say that to you, and I wish you all a pleasant evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Yoshi. Anybody else who wished to speak before the council? Mr. McKee, go ahead.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Patrick McKee. I live on Grant Street in the Sunnyland neighborhood. I'd like to talk about the review of the city's comprehensive plan, which is now underway. I think that the most important consideration that begins the consideration of the comprehensive plan is the population growth estimates that are going to occur over the next 20 or 30 years. And if my recollection is correct, that the city council has chosen to pick a population growth projection which is quite high. In other words, you have choices that are offered to you by the Office of Financial Management. You could have a low figure, a middle figure, and a high figure. And I think you haven't taken enough public comment on what is the appropriate population growth figure for the next comprehensive plan, because once you have accepted a population growth figure and you're planning on that growth figure, the deck has been stacked. In other words, you will have to find dwelling units to accommodate this population that you're projecting for the next comprehensive plan, period. That will mean you'll have to look at urban growth areas, you'll have to look at urban villages, and if the growth figure is too high, you'll have to start forcing higher densities into existing neighborhoods that may not want it. I think you really need to take more commentary, more public commentary on how fast do we want to grow in this city? How many people do we want to accommodate? Can't we take a planning perspective that is more conservative rather than taking a high population growth figure for planning our future? Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Anybody else wish to speak before the council? Seeing none, I'll close the open comment period, and I will now go to our first public hearing. It's parking removal for ES 0491 Ohio Street Bike Lanes. Mr. Ted.
Good evening. Thank you. Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. That is exactly right. This is a public hearing for removal of parking on an arterial street. It's associated with the bicycle improvement project, which is installing bike lanes on Ohio Street. That's a project that was identified in the Bicycle Master Plan as a priority. However, within the existing curb-to-curb area, so the paved area between the existing curb lines, there's not enough room to accommodate bike lane improvements and keep parking on both sides of the arterial. So we have, we've taken this to council in the past. It's an approved project, so the council approved the Bicycle Master Plan. We then took the project, Ohio Street Bicycle Lanes, to council and also to the TBD board, and the project has been approved for funding in 2000, actually, it was in 2014. It was a project that we were unable to complete last year, so we've moved the project into 2015 and anticipate doing the work this summer. However, it does require council action to approve the removal of the parking. So tonight, we'll give a brief presentation of the project, a little bit of background, some of the analysis that went into looking at the parking removal, identifying which side we're recommending removing parking from, a little bit about the outreach process, working with the property owners and the business owners throughout the corridor, and then just go a little bit into the actual improvements themselves, and we'll be recommending some improvements that we haven't seen in the past, treatments that were identified in the Bicycle Master Plan that we'll be implementing for the first time in Bellingham on this project. So with that, I'd like to have Chris Como and Colleen Mitchell come up, do a brief presentation on the project itself, and then ask council to open up the public hearing after that.
Okay. Good evening, council. Chris Como, Public Works. And let's see, the display. There we go. So I'm just going to go over several of the things Ted has actually already mentioned. I just want to get everybody up to speed. This is where we're talking about. It's the section of Ohio Street that goes right past Bellingham High School from Cornwall Avenue on the west side down to the Grant Street corridor on the east side. It doesn't quite go to State Street yet because we do not yet have a recommendation for what's going to happen on State Street. We'll be studying that as we go. And as Ted mentioned, this project's had a lot of history. It was first identified by the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee as we were doing the work for the 2006 Comprehensive Plan. It was adopted for the Central Business District and the Sunnyland Neighborhoods as bike lanes on Ohio Street, recognizing at that time that there was potentially going to be conflict between the parking that was on the corridor and the ability to get bike lanes in there. It's been in the comprehensive plan for coming up on 10 years. As Ted mentioned, we've identified intersection improvements through the Pedestrian Master Plan, and we initially, the Transportation Commission had recommended funding for this in 2013, and it was funded, but as Ted mentioned, it wasn't, we weren't able to get to it last year. We actually did the parking study this last year. After you adopted the six-year tip last June, we actually dove into the project and started collecting the information on the corridor. We did about two weeks of parking survey in August and two weeks in September before and after the start of the school year. Bellingham High School is right there, and so we wanted to make sure we captured both sides of that. Moving forward, you approved the Bicycle Master Plan in October with this project, as Ted mentioned, as the third highest-ranked project. And then as the TBD board in November, you approved the funding for 2015 to get this project going, and ever since then, we've been trying to really hit this project pretty hard. We took it to the Transportation Commission in January, had an open house in December, had about 20 people at the open house at the Bellingham High School, and got a lot of public input. This is what it looks like in the Bicycle Master Plan. You can see Ohio Street right here. It's one of the segments that's recommended for parking removal and reconfiguration. And I want to remind everybody that, and you've seen this slide before, but it's a very important corridor and link in our bicycle network. As you know, we're going to be doing a lot of bicycle and pedestrian improvements this year and next year. This is the Texas Street Corridor. All the crossings we're putting on Alabama and the Illinois Bike Boulevard. Here's the Grant Street Bike Boulevard that connects to Ohio, Michigan. Getting down to, right here is the Ohio Street Corridor connecting to Grant Street Bike Boulevard, the Meeter Bike Lanes going underneath I-5 and up Lincoln Street to Lakeway. So it's a really important link in the overall bike network. Ellis Street is also something that comes down and connects to the Kentucky Bike Boulevard here, and then continues on the trail behind the high school and again into the Ohio Corridor, crossing the Ohio Corridor and continuing on the trail with the just reconstructed bridge into the downtown area. This year, as I mentioned, we took this to the Transportation Commission. They endorsed the staff recommendation for Modified Concept Day, which Colleen is going to walk you through tonight. We're here to ask you the question, would you support removing parking on one side of the street in order to accommodate the bicycle lanes that are recommended? There's a lot of work to be done between now and June when construction is anticipated. We still have to get through all the design and engineering. We can't really design the intersections until we know which side of the street the parking may come off of. That influences the intersection design in terms of curb extensions and things like that. And then hopefully, we're going to be able to get this built between June and August. School ends at the end of June and begins about the third week of August. Bellingham High School has an open house every year about a week before school starts, so we've got a very tight window for construction, so got to get going on this project. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Colleen to walk you through the actual details of the construction.
Good evening. Colleen Mitchell with Public Works Engineering. So as Ted mentioned earlier, we started by evaluating the existing conditions of the corridor, which currently include 12-foot travel lanes and 8-foot parking lanes in both directions for a 40-foot overall curb-to-curb width. Initially, we looked at reallocating the width of the existing lanes and quickly found out this was infeasible due to lack of width, curb-to-curb width. So in accordance with the recommendation from the Bicycle Master Plan, parking removal was evaluated. The three scenarios shown here, removal of parking on the south side, the north side, or all parking along the corridor, were presented at the open house in December, and we got feedback from neighbors as well as Councilwoman Liliquist, who was in attendance. And because the majority of parking along the corridor is on the north side of the street, removal of the south side of parking would result in the most retention of parking along the corridor. So when exploring locations of bike lanes along the corridor, we evaluated both standard bike lanes as well as buffered bike lanes. Where space allows buffered bike lanes are certainly desired, and we looked at buffering the bike lanes either from the travel lane or from the adjacent parking lane. And based on comments that were received at the open house as well as the Transportation Commission meeting, Public Works staff evaluated the feasibility of protected bike lanes. So protected bike lanes are bike lanes that are physically separated from the vehicular travel lanes. And we looked at locating, potentially locating the parking lane adjacent to the travel lane and kind of setting back the bike lane, having it against the curb closer to the sidewalk rather than right against the travel lanes. Excuse me. And during discussions with Public Works staff, some safety concerns arose for cyclists at the intersections especially. In order for the cyclists to be visible at intersections from behind the parked cars, further parking would need to be removed at the intersections to make those cyclists visible. In addition, the cars trying to turn onto Ohio Street from the side streets would be that much further back from the travel lane of Ohio Street to be able to see for the clear space to be able to pull out within, into Ohio Street to travel along there, or if they pulled up to the travel lane, they'd be blocking that protected bike lane. So, let's see. So when we evaluated, when we came up with the proposed cross-section based on comments received from individual meetings with business owners, comments and discussions at the open house, as well as Public Works staff input, we've decided on, or we're proposing, excuse me, a 5-foot bicycle lane on the south side, a 10-and-a-half-foot travel lane both eastbound and westbound, a 5-foot bike lane on the north side, a 2-foot buffer between that bike lane, and the 7-foot parking strip along the north side of the street. The 2-foot buffer between the westbound bike lane and the adjacent parking lane will help to reduce conflicts between cyclists and drivers potentially opening their doors towards the bike lanes. And we also, as Chris mentioned, intend to end the bike lanes at Grant Street rather than State Street to provide better connectivity to the growing bicycle network and allow for greater flexibility once we do get that recommendation for what to do on State Street. And when evaluating the intersection, so we're looking at this project as the Ohio Street Corridor Bike Lanes project, but we also realize that the Ohio Ellis intersection was identified as a number-one priority in the Pedestrian Master Plan, and the Grant-Ohio intersection was also identified as a pretty high priority to evaluate. So safety for all people, for people using all modes of travel were considered in these intersections, looking at separated facilities for pedestrians and bicyclists, visual cues to indicate preferred crossing locations, reduced exposure by shortened crossing distances while keeping in mind turning radius for large vehicles and trucks along the corridor. We understand this is a commercial area and want to maintain that. So we're trying to create consistency throughout the network, especially at intersections. We feel like predictability leads to better compliance for all users. So to get into the proposed design, just briefly... So to get into the proposed design, just briefly, here at the Cornwall Intersection, we're proposing pavement markings across Cornwall Avenue connecting the shared lane markings on Halleck to the dedicated bike lanes on Ohio Street. So for westbound bicyclists on Ohio Street, we're proposing a bike box at the Cornwall Intersection. This will be our first bike box in the city, and this will allow for cyclists to advance in front of cars and have priority at the light. The green paint will be a visual cue for drivers to stop behind the bike box at a red light, and symbols will be placed within the bike box to indicate where cyclists should be located to activate the signal. Green panels similar to, somewhat similar to a crosswalk marking are proposed across the high school parking lot, or high school driveway here. And these markings will indicate to students who may be new drivers to look for cyclists before crossing the green panels. In addition, they will help indicate to drivers turning into the high school to yield to cyclists. The Ellis Street Intersection, the bulbout on the north side will bring bikes and pedestrians out from behind the parked cars, but for better visibility and shortened crossing distance. And we're also proposing to remove one of the pedestrian crossings to concentrate all the pedestrians in one location here, and like I said before, separated facilities for cyclists and pedestrians. For the Franklin Street Intersection, dash lines and shared lane markings indicate to drivers approaching Ohio Street to yield to bikes and indicate to bikers to stay within the bike lane rather than kind of hugging the curb, as a lot of cyclists tend to do for better visibility. And at the Grant Street Intersection, to be consistent with the treatments proposed at Ohio Ellis, bulbouts shorten the crossing distance across Ohio Street for both pedestrians and bicycles, and we propose to provide separate facilities again, and the green panels for visual cues for both the cyclists and the drivers. And the turning radius at this intersection in particular will be carefully designed to allow for truck-turning traffic. So as Chris mentioned earlier, we'll be, we won't be addressing the remainder of the corridor to State Street until we have better guidance for the State Street Corridor. So this is our proposed design based on the assumption that parking will be removed from the south side of Ohio Street, from Cornwall to Grant. With your decision tonight, we can move forward with the final design permitting and construction.
Thank you. Is there any questions before we get started? Jack?
Approximately how many of the public showed up at the open house?
About 20.
20?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Michael?
How many alternative, you say there's a 40-foot curb-to-curb distance. How many scenarios were evaluated, presented to the public or the Transportation Commission that used more than the 40-foot part of the right-of-way that might have moved the curb, 5, 6, 8, whatever feet?
There weren't any. This project, one of the assumptions for the project was we were going to work within the existing curb-to-curb area. One of the reasons for that is simply cost. You know, looking through, the project says identified in the Bicycle Master Plan, one of the real goals of the plan was to focus on connectivity, system-wide connectivity, and to do that, we're looking at corridors where we can make some low-cost improvements, and Ohio was one of those. So we didn't present an alternative that included widening the traveled way, you know, bringing the curb back. Would have certainly allowed for some other alternatives, but at a much higher cost. So that was not something that was presented to the public.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, before I open up public hearing, could you put one of the slides up on the map so we can, oh, there you go. That's good enough.
Have a favorite intersection?
Yeah, I've got a lot of favorite intersections. I'll open up the public hearing. I know we have one person signed up, Patrick McKee.
Patrick McKee, Grant Street in the beautiful Sunnyland Neighborhood. This project runs right through the Sunnyland Neighborhood. I have lived in the Sunnyland Neighborhood for many years. I'd like to begin my comments by talking about the parking survey that was done for this. It was done in late August and early September. Anyone who's lived in this area knows that those are usually very nice periods, warm and sunny. People tend to leave their cars at home, they walk, they bike. I don't think this survey represents the other nine months of the year when it's darker, colder, and rainier, when people do get into their cars more often than at the time this survey was taken. The other part of the survey that I would like to point out is they use this 22-foot standard for a parking space, and using that standard, they figured that there's 35 parking spaces along the area between Cornwall Avenue and roughly Grant Street. Now, 22-foot parking spaces were probably a standard that was good when finned pink Cadillacs roamed the landscape. I would bet you you could fit two Honda Fits into a 22-foot parking space. And cars are not only smaller today, but they're going to get smaller in the future. So I think this parking survey underestimated the number of spaces that are potentially available in this area. Another thing about the parking survey, it did not anticipate future growth in the area and future needs for parking in this area. From Cornwall Avenue to Franklin Street has just been incorporated into the new downtown urban village area. This area is anticipating future growth, including housing, live-work housing in this area. There's going to be, in my opinion, a need for more parking in this area. On-street parking in front of businesses is a decades-old expectation of businesses and shoppers. To remove it suddenly like this should not be done lightly. I believe that the success, and if you read the comments by businesspeople who were interviewed for this project, many of them had concerns about removal of the on-street parking. Cars are not going away. They are becoming smaller. Hopefully, they will not be powered by fossil fuels. They will be powered by electricity or hydrogen. As long as this city does not have a comprehensive Manhattan-like mass transit system, people are going to rely on cars in this city. You are going to need spaces on arterials, and you should not take it away lightly. I would like to propose as an alternate solution that this arterial, it's a short arterial between Cornwall and roughly Grant Street, it's less than a mile, it's perfectly flat. The speed limit is 25 miles an hour. Let's make it a shared lane area. Let's let cars and bicycles share the lanes in this short arterial area. I know it does not meet the current arterial standards, but this is an unusual arterial. Don't take away the parking. Let the cars and the bicycles share the travel lanes. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Anybody else that wants to speak on this topic? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, turn it back to Ted. You want to make any comments?
No, just to remind the council that the request is for authorization to move forward with removing parking on an arterial. That is a requirement in the Comprehensive Plan. It is a council decision, which is why we brought it forward to you. I would say that, you know, we certainly don't take removal of parking on arterials lightly. I think that the public outreach on this particular project was successful and that we had interactions with, I believe, all the property owners within the corridor. And certainly, there were some concerns. By and large, folks were supportive of a bicycle facility, but certainly, some business owners had some concerns about removal of parking. I think that we've put forward a proposal that mitigates that to a large degree and keeps the majority of the parking by removing parking only on the one side. So it is a serious decision. We understand that, but we also think meeting the multimodal goals of the city, implementing the Bicycle Master Plan and also the Pedestrian Master Plan as it relates to the two crossings is also an important goal of the city. We'll continue to work with property owners that have expressed concerns over lost parking. There are a few opportunities that we're going to continue to pursue in terms of shared parking, potentially utilizing some underutilized parking on private properties, and the city could certainly act as a, someone that tries to facilitate that transaction, as well as some parking on underutilized right-of-ways. So there are some options that we're going to continue to pursue, but staff is requesting council approval of moving forward.
Okay. Turn it back to council. Jack?
I appreciate Pat's comments, but I guess I don't agree as much about what you're saying, Pat, as what I've seen in our other two attempts to put in bike lanes, which were Cornwall and Northwest. And when we deliberated on those, and those were very contentious items, we had a lot of comments about the fact that, you know, parking was very important and it was going, you know, like, the sky was going to fall if we wouldn't put in these bike lanes. And it turned out that the sky did not fall, and in fact, the staff's studies had turned out to be spot-on in that, you know, if we're seeing the 35% parking utilizations going on right now in this corridor, there's a lot of empty space there. And we can argue about seasons or whatever, but at the same time, I mean, this is next to a high school. I think that providing the infrastructure for an alternative means of transportation for high school students is a very important thing for our community, and I think we really should be pushing forward with that. I guess I have other things to say, but what I guess what I would like to do is make a motion to approve the staff recommendations.
Second that. Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Michael?
First of all, could I just have you respond?
Turn your mic.
Could I just have you respond to the item of a shareo or shared bike-car lane? When do we see those as being good ideas and not good ideas, and was that evaluated here, and why was that not being included?
Yeah, that's a good question. Certainly, the preferred solution is a dedicated facility, and so that's really where we start. Certainly, in terms of a facility along a corridor that was identified as such a high priority as Ohio, and I think we showed some of the importance of this particular link on a previous slide that shows how it integrates with some of the bicycle boulevards that are being done on lower-volume streets, really looking at the two opportunities to cross I-5. Shareos on an arterial, where we would consider that is where there just simply isn't room to, even if you remove parking, or maybe where parking is already removed on one side and we don't want to lose parking on both sides, then we may consider a shareo or shared lane. But in a situation like this, where, as Jack pointed out, the parking study really did identify the fact that there is capacity, certainly, there'll be times of the day, potentially in seasonality issues with parking along the corridor, but given the success of Cornwall and Northwest, we certainly believe that the parking capacity along this section of Ohio would support removal on one side. So did we consider a shareo? Not very long because looking at the parking realities along this section and given the high priority of Ohio, we felt that this was a more appropriate solution.
Okay. Go ahead, Michael.
I want to separate the removal of parking from the bike lane. I think we have an incredibly strong case for putting in bicycle infrastructure here. You've seen the case. This is a great little connection. It's a part of town that actually people ride through already. I mean, I have no problems with putting in some kind of a bicycle facility. And actually, I agree with you. I am actually a fan of going the other direction and going as protected a bicycle lane as possible. So shareos, for me, are a poor second choice, but I thought it was important for us to talk about that. I was actually hoping for something which wouldn't have to remove the parking, but could still get the bike facilities. That's why I asked about going more than 40 feet curb-to-curb. I really would like to have seen what that was. It would have been nice to know if it would cost an extra $100,000 to keep the parking. Again, I have no doubt I'm in support of the bike lane. The question is, is there a way we could have also kept the parking? And this is a hearing about the parking, not about the bike lane. We already decided it's a great place for a bike facility. We already approved that plan. I'm already on board with that. If that was just $100,000, then I'd say, hey, let's do it. It's a very wide sidewalk there in the north. It's like 12, 13 feet. It's very wide. Maybe, maybe it could have been cheaply, then again, maybe if it was a, I'll make up another number, $5 million, then I go, well, no. Saving 10 parking spaces is not worth $5 million of taxpayer money. So, you know, I guess for me, I'm feeling like I'm being asked to decide with maybe not all the options. So yeah, maybe Rory, if you could tell me, if we had napkin-ed that out, what might it have been?
Napkin-out, widening a road like that's about $1 million a mile. This is probably a mile, half a mile, so it's actually, I'd probably take the cost and triple it. You'd probably be up to, close to $1 million for that. The project where it right now is about $300,000, but it does add a significant cost. The other point I would point out is that we have a lot of parking encroaching into the right-of-way, so we'd actually have to go in and probably remove some of that parking that's now enjoyed by those parking lots for some of those businesses.
You mean the north of this house or both?
You can just see it right there on the south side, just west, or east of Ellis. All those cars parked there.
Yeah. I was referring more to the north, who I think there might have been an option. Okay.
So there's other impacts of parking.
Thank you for that answer. That helps me.
Roxanne?
Well, as a cyclist who lives at the intersection of Kentucky and Iowa, I actually ride my bike on Ohio quite a bit. And, you know, I'm used to being an urban cyclist where what you do when there isn't this type of service is you just get going as fast as you can. And so I really appreciate that this is being looked at because I've thought of this a million times when I've been on Ohio because it's such a great conduit between the Sunnyland Neighborhood, other neighborhoods, and the downtown and everything in between. So I'm just really supportive of this work. I know it's tough to get rid of parking in any fashion, but I also hope and pray that future development projects will include creative types of parking structure, and maybe we would have less cars in our future.
Jack?
So I see a lot of other communities have protected bike lanes, and I'm concerned about the fact that this doesn't pencil out, in your opinion. Is it going to pencil out in other, you know, in other areas of the community? That, you know, I'm concerned that, you know, we can't make this work. Is this going to be the precedent for other places?
Yeah, I think every corridor is unique. We've identified several projects, several locations in the Bicycle Master Plan, as you know, that we've identified as further study needed. Those are the more complex corridors, higher-volume corridors, areas where we're likely going to need to have more along the lines of what Michael's suggesting, a widening of the corridor potentially, and looking at the opportunity to have truly separated facilities, you know, truly separated facilities, physically separated, cycle tracks, buffered, protected bike lanes, protected bike lanes. So I don't think that not putting them here is going to preclude us from looking at that solution elsewhere. We did look at it. We looked at using the parking to buffer it, and the reason for not pursuing that is really safety. And that's one of the challenges because I think it's generally assumed that a protected, fully-protected bike lane is always safer. And it really does, it really does depend. It depends on the intersections. It depends on the turning movements. It depends on the length of the corridor without cross streets or alleys. So we did look at it, and again, we had the assumption that we weren't going to widen curb-to-curb. We did look at the opportunity to use parking as the fully-protected bike lane using the parking, and just felt like not only did it require additional removal of parking, it created some challenges at the intersections. So we felt this was the best design along this section of Ohio, but I would not say that that means we're not going to come back to the council at future locations and say we believe a fully-protected bike lane is the best alternative somewhere else.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Thank you, sir. We will now go to our council standing committees. First committee up is Public Works, Public Safety, and Terry Bornham is the chair.
Thank you, Gene. We had just one item before us today. It was a Public Works Operations update, and today, staff provided an update, an overview of the current activities in the Public Works operations. It was a good general overview. I'm not going to go over all the parts of it. One point I do want to highlight is I just think it is a great one. We've got 170 FT We've got 170 FTEs in that department. In this past year, we went from four lost time accidents, got it down to zero. To have that many employees and the work on safety issues to get it down to zero, my hat goes off to the department heads, because, you know, this is something we have to strive for, and all, for all of our workers in terms of workplace safety. It's great. If people want more information, it's on, it's on the television. And end of report.
Thank you, sir. We will now go to the planning committee, and Jack Weiss is the chair of that one.
Thank you, Gene. We had one item this afternoon. It was the extension and renewal of an emergency ordinance creating interim zoning for the establishment of facilities producing, processing, and retailing recreational marijuana. On August 11th, 2014, the city council renewed an emergency ordinance and interim zoning regarding land use regulations related to the production, processing, and retailing of recreational marijuana. The emergency interim ordinance expires on February 12th, 2015. A renewal of these interim regulations will hopefully allow the state legislature the time to resolve conflicting medical and recreational marijuana regulations and allow staff the time to draft final rules and conduct a Type VI legislative review. The proposed renewal does not include changes to the previously adopted interim rules and will continue to allow individuals to apply for licenses as authorized by Initiative 502. We had a discussion this afternoon about this. One item that, well, two issues associated with this. One is that this is an emergency ordinance. It will require at least five council members to vote affirmatively to have this extended. And second is that, because it is an emergency ordinance, and if it does pass, that within 60 days, we will have a public hearing to solicit comments from the public. The committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second? Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We now go to Community and Economic Development, and Michael Illicustis is the chair.
Thanks, Gene. We also had just one item before us. It's a resolution amending the 2014 HUD action plan, allocating federal funds from HUD for low and moderate income citizens in Bellingham. The 2014 action plan, which is a component of the 2013 to 2017 HUD consolidated plan, guides the allocation of the federal community development block grant monies and the home investment partnership program monies received by the city for use in meeting the needs of low and moderate income citizens of Bellingham. The amendment adds a new activity, which will enable the funding of a feasibility study for a new housing project for young adults. It also allocates federal funds for tenant-based rental assistance, and it amends the funding and outcomes for the home buyer program activities. That last part basically is adjusting the numbers. Under the fiscal impact, there's actually no increase in funding. The home funds, there actually was additional payments were received. That's money in around $85,000. And that $85,000, in a sense, is being redeployed for the rental assistance. And in addition, one program is being reduced by a certain amount. That frees up money to increase funding for one of the Colson Land Trust projects, and it also creates room for the $7,500 for the feasibility study for some, a housing project by the Northwest Youth Services. So this is actually, in a certain sense, revenue neutral, but we need to amend by resolution the plan, so that it's all done openly and publicly for this plan. This afternoon, the committee unanimously recommended passage of this resolution, and I so move.
Second? Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
End of committee.
Thank you, Michael. We now go to committee whole, where we had four items. The first item is an ordinance of the City of Bellingham, Washington, amending Chapter 4.76.040 of the Bellingham Municipal Code regarding the solid waste fund to include nuisance abatement as intended use of the fund. Chapter 4.76.040 of the Bellingham Municipal Code describes the city council policy regarding intended uses for solid waste fund. The use of the solid waste funds for nuisance abatement is appropriated in certain circumstances when routine code enforcement processes do not achieve code compliance. The policy was discussed in fall of 2004, in our 2014 budget discussion. The fiscal impact is abatement actions are not routine, and the cost is not known before the abatement process is complete. On average, it is anticipated that less than $30,000 will be spent annually from the solid waste fund for nuisance abatement purposes. Committee whole, discuss this this afternoon, and I move approval.
Second?
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All is in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The next item is the Rental Registration and Inspection Program Update. I'm not going to go through all of the summary statement. I'm just going to say exactly what we did this afternoon. Rick Sepler, our Planning and Community Development Director, came forward this afternoon with some options for the council as far as registration fees. And the first, and the only motion that was made in that committee was, we had Option 1, 2, and 3. Councilman Weiss came up with Option 4, which is units from 1 to 19 are $10, and 20 and up are $8, and I'll move that.
Gene?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I make an amendment to that?
It's your motion.
Yeah. Well, it's, there's a legal reason, or maybe a practical reason.
Okay, no, that's fine.
State law actually has a breakout in the Tenant-Landlord Act of 21 or above.
Okay.
And so, I would like to amend that motion to have the $10 rate be from 1 unit to 20 units, and then the $8 rate be from 21 and above. And then that would be in sync with the state law.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded on the amendment. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Now on the main motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Also this afternoon, we heard from Jim Tinner on inspections. He talked about methamphetamine. He talked about lead paint, and he talked about asbestos. Asbestos is almost impossible to tackle, so that one we probably won't be spending much time on. He did talk a little bit about lead paint and methamphetamine. Rick, you want to say anything?
Hold.
Yes, too.
Our intent is to provide information on those subjects and link people to resources so they can address them through separate means.
Yes. Okay. Any further on this issue? Jack?
Just for Linda's sake, I would second the main motion of the other motion that we had, because you had made it, and then I interrupted with the amendment.
Okay. Yeah, Jack, second. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. We will now go to the approval of minutes. January 26th, night meeting minutes. Move approval?
Second.
Roxanne and Michael. Any discussion? All is in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Now, can everybody remember the older new business they brought up this afternoon? It's not that necessary, but go ahead.
Well, the one thing I wanted to do outreach about, that I brought up earlier today, was I had asked our committee of the whole to please consider the opportunity to do, to explore the topic of paid and protected sick leave in our city. We could start with a work session, give council enough time to really think about what their thoughts are on this, and then also help the community understand that we're going to get opportunities for input if it moves beyond a council work session. So, I just wanted to do outreach to let you know that we may be taking this up. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Michael?
I had two things in our new business. One is, we appointed both myself and Pinky to a work group along with city staff members having to do with communications, part of the city's overall communication strategy, particularly dealing with social media in the city council. And the other thing is that we agreed to refer to committee for a work session, discussion of state water quality standards, and in particular, the rulemaking process going on in Olympia right now, which can affect our community.
Dan?
As your newly appointed Ward III representative, I'd like to, again, thank city staff members for meeting with me and providing me facility tours and meetings with their staff. I met with 22 department heads and senior managers in the past 40 days. It's been a vertical learning curve. I do appreciate all of the help and support with that. I just want to thank city staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Pinky?
And I just wanted to let the community know that our wonderful legislative assistant, Marie Marchand, made us a citizens guide to Bellingham City Council. So this is out there for community members. There's really great information on what the city council does, and our contact information on the back, but that's out there for community consumption.
Okay, thank you. My item was the retreat, to date to be determined, and the mayor and department heads are going to come. Mayor has a good suggestions. Those that come in the morning can leave in the afternoon. Those that come in the afternoon don't have to come in the morning, so it's going to be great. Except the council's got to be there all day, but that's okay. No, it'll be, yeah, you have to be there too, but it'll be all right. Okay, we'll now go to the executive session report. We have six items on the executive session report. The first item is labor negotiations. Staff provided information on the ratification of the Fraternal Order of Police Lieutenants' bargaining agreement for 2015, 2017. The council will now entertain a motion to approve the agreement with the following general items. 0% wage increase January 1st, 2015. 1.25% increase January 1st, 2016. 1.75% increase for January 1st, 2017. Longevity pay is an increase up to 4%, based on the years of service. And the benefits are, the city's contribution towards health insurance premium will be calculated as a flat dollar amount rather than a percentage. The city's contribution amount will increase no more than 6% each year over the prior year's contribution amount. So moved?
Second?
Good. Yes. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries 6, 0, 1, or 6, 0, with Roxanne Murphy out of the room. 6, 0, 1, okay. We will now go to the second item, which is a litigation matter. Fred Meyer Stores, Inc., appeal of the MDNS and consolidated permit issued for the Costco project, HE 14 PL 019. Staff provided an update on Fred Meyer's appeal of the Costco's proposal to construct a new store on West Bakerview Road. I will now entertain a motion authorizing the mayor to execute a settlement agreement that provides, four, Fred Meyer's dismissal of its appeal, the city's construction of a new east-west arterial called Mahogany Avenue, just north of the Costco site, which will connect Pacific Highway to Northwest Avenue. Three, Costco's construction of a new north-south arterial called Arctic Avenue, just east of the Costco site, which will connect West Bakerview Road to Mahogany Avenue, and Costco's construction of an additional turn lane, lanes on West Bakerview Road at the intersection with Arctic Avenue and the Fred Meyer parking lot. Move. Move approval. Second? Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All is in favor will, oh, I'm sorry, Jack, go ahead.
Just a clarification, is it that we're building Mahogany to Arctic or to Northwest as part of the settlement? Because I thought that we had talked that it was, that the settlement was up to Arctic.
My understanding is that there was a commitment over a certain period of time on the entire length, but that it was recognized that it would be best efforts, and then there's like a milestone at some point. So, but I think, I think it's best efforts with a certainty at some point that it would be built.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Any further discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Three is a potential property acquisition. Staff provided information on a potential property acquisition. Direction given, no action was taken. Number four, potential property acquisition. Staff provided information on a potential property acquisition of a trail easement on the shut property south of Telegraph Road and north of the, man alive. Help me out here, Peter.
Paula Kika?
Oh, yeah, sure, you just whipped that right out. You've been, is that Hawaiian? It must be. Paula Kika Apartments Property. The city will use the easement to construct a trail from the Apartments' property to Telegraph Road. I will now entertain a motion to authorize the purchase of the trail easement on the shut property and its appraised value of $10,500. Move approval?
Second?
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All is in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The fifth item is potential property sale. Staff provided information on the potential property sale of a mitigation easement to Costco on two city-owned parcels totaling approximately 14.3 acres located on Northwest Avenue across the street from Cornwall Church. Costco will use the easement to mitigate for the wetland impacts from the construction of its new store on West Bakerview Road. Costco's purchase price will reimburse the city for all its costs of acquiring these two parcels. I will now entertain a motion to authorize the sale of a mitigation easement to Costco on the two city-owned parcels located on Northwest Avenue for $497,606.23. Move approval? Second? Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The final item is litigation. City of Bellingham versus Sangki Yi, Wachem Superior Court, case number 14-2-02670-2. Staff provided information on litigation matter. Direction was given, no action was taken. Mayor's report.
I'll be brief and just talk about appointments, some of which you need to approve and some are for information only. The first is an appointment of Jasmine Faust to the Greenways Advisory Committee for your approval.
Move approval? Second? Motion been made and seconded. Roxanne?
I thought I'd heard that Greenways was struggling to get female involvement, so I'm excited to see this.
She seemed really involved. I mean, she's real excited about this.
That's great. Thank you.
Michael?
I'm also excited by this, because she's actually a younger person with young children. That's often a demographic that's hard to get on advisory boards. She're often people in her second careers, retirees, so it's nice to have her on the Greenways.
Okay, any further discussion? All is in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries 6, 0, 1.
For your information, appointment of Alan Artman to the Bellingham-Wachem County Commission on Domestic Violence. Appointment of Randy Osborne to the Civil Service Commission for your approval, and you'll probably be really interested to know that Randy and I went to kindergarten together.
Move approval?
Second?
Oh, my goodness. How can you remember back that far? Okay. Motion been made and seconded. Any, any discussion other than, she's known him for a long time. Okay. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries 6, 0.
For your information, appointment of Robert Hendricks to the Citizens Transportation Advisory Group. Appointment of Richard Osen to the Bellingham Public Library Board of Trustees for your approval.
Move approval?
Second?
Motion been made and seconded. Kelly, do you know if that, is that Barbara Osen's husband? Do you know?
I don't, I don't know. He was a professor at, well, not a professor, but in the library at Western.
Okay.
And he's, he's, he's an excellent addition to the Board of Trustees.
Okay. Any further discussion? All is in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries 6, 0.
And finally, an appointment of Katrina Pope to the Seahom Hill Arboretum Board of Directors for your information, and she's also another just finishing college student, and it's in her field, and so it's really, she's real excited to be on the arboretum board.
Ted, did you want to clarify something? Or Peter? Ted want, oh, go ahead, Ted.
Yeah, sorry, I had stepped out of the room. Peter asked me to clarify exactly what the city's committing to in the settlement agreement.
Sure.
And the Mahogany is really broken into two separate sections in the settlement agreement. agreement. The city will be contractually obligated to construct the section of Mahogany from Arctic to the west to Pacific, and will be required to do so no later than one year after Costco opens. So, that's going to be a contractual obligation as identified in the settlement agreement. The section of Mahogany east from Arctic, so from Arctic to Northwest, there is no contractual obligation. What the agreement says is that the city will make its best faith effort to construct that section. So, it really is different. It's not the entire section that has the same commitment.
Okay. Jack?
That was the reason why I brought it up because you had indicated in your readout that it was.
This is my, this is their script.
Your script, I know. It was a script. So, it was different from the script then.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And a big thank you to the staff for all you've done on that project. Thank goodness it's moving forward. It's moving forward. Okay, consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second. Oh, Delita, boy, she gotten fast, huh? Did you get the second, Linda? Okay. Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? All is in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries seven zero. Final consideration of ordinance.
We just have one tonight, Agenda Bill 20709, an ordinance amending the 2015-2016 adopted budget appropriating an additional $106,748 and $58,910 from estimated ending unreserved balance in the Development Services Fund to provide staffing and services in the Planning Department for the new rental registration and inspection program.
Move third and final.